All right, welcome to this evening's regular business meeting. We will have our invocation from Chaplain Little of Clayton County Fire and Emergency Services and be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance which will be led by Sergeant First Class, Retired Ed Taylor. If you would, please stand with me.
Lord heavenly Father, we thank you for allowing us to meet tonight. We ask that the business be conducted in a good way, that the citizens of Clayton County would be moved forward with the process and the progress. We thank you for folks who dedicate their lives to doing just that. We do this all in your name, in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
(Inaudible)
(Inaudible) Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our July 5th regular business meeting. The first order of business is the adoption of the agenda. Do any board members have any amendments?
Yes, Madam Clerk, I need to have an emergency item added, like to be added to the consent agenda. It is from the Finance Department on behalf of the Library Board. It appears that we were given some grant money or general fund money from the state that was not used in the amount of $60,834 that needs to be returned back to the state. And that is my motion to add it to the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Why can't we put it on the regular agenda and have questions? I have a question about how that happened.
Well...
How and why?
We can do that because you want to, I mean, it doesn't take a second to take it back off, so, well, my motion is to put it on the regular agenda.
Right, and pull it out.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Davis. I revise my motion.
Okay, but it was already, can we make sure we're in order, please? Because it was already...
It was already approved and seconded?
Correct.
Before the revision?
Yes.
That I can make a revision before we take a vote?
Correct.
Okay, so we're in order?
So, mm-hmm.
Okay.
So, once again...
Because there was no vote on there before he made the revised motion.
Okay, all right.
So, once again, those in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed. Issue unanimous. Are there any others?
Yes, I'd like to remove item six for discussion.
Item six, Finance Advisory Service for Clayton County, Terminus Municipal Advisors. Is there a second? And you want to put it on the regular agenda, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, is there a second?
It doesn't require a second.
That's right, my bad. Okay, let's go. Put it on the regular agenda. Next, anybody else?
Yes, item number five for the regular agenda.
Recommendation for Fourth Contract Amendment, Tenants Management Services. Is this for removal or in general?
On the regular agenda.
Or is there a second?
We don't need a second.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Also, number two, item two for Atlas, where there's a contract amendment as well.
All right, Madam Clerk, put item two as well. Any others? All right, hearing none, take a motion for the adoption of the agenda. So move. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed. Issue unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, our next item is Veteran of the Month.
All right, our Veteran of the Month is Retired Sergeant First Class Ed Taylor. Edward L. Taylor, Jr. is a native of Chicago, Illinois. He and his wife, Margareta, have made their home in Jonesboro, Georgia, since November of 2000. They have five children and five grandchildren. He received his BA in Business Management from University of Louisiana. Ed moved to Jonesboro after retiring from active duty with over 21 years of service in the United States Army. While in the Army, he has served in numerous leadership positions. He is a graduate of the U.S. Army Signal Non-Commissioned Officer Advanced Course, the U.S. Army First Sergeant's Course, and a slew of other accolades in training. His last two positions held were as a Signal Company First Sergeant for HHD-36 Signal Battalion in Korea, and his final assignment as an instructor, writer, and trainer in operations, NCOIC at the Regimental Officer Academy in Fort Gordon, Georgia. His awards and declarations include the Meritorious Service Medal, Army Commendation Medal, Army Achievement Medal, and numerous other ribbons and medals. Ed has previously worked as a branch manager for Wachovia Bank, BB&amp;T, and the First National Bank of Griffin, and now currently serves as Clayton County Business Banker, Branch Manager, with Heritage Bank in Forest Park, Georgia. His community involvement has consisted of the following: Board of Directors for the Heritage Foundation, 2018 through 2021; Board Member Secretary for the Forest Park Downtown Development Authority, 2018 through 2022; Member Secretary for the Forest Park Urban Redevelopment Authority, 2018 through 2022; and Member of the Forest Park Business Coalition, Member of the Clayton County Chamber Partners Committee, 2018 also through 2020. He participates in Moral Business Connections and Forest Park High School PTSA Committee. Ed is a membership Chair Member of the Rotary Club of Lake Spivey, Clayton County, and a Member of the Raymond Bennett Military Masonic Lodge, Number 33, Oklahoma Jurisdiction. Ed has previously served as a Member of the City of Hampton Business and Merchants Association, a Partner in Education with Luella Middle School, Annual Sponsor for Henry County NAACP, Annual Sponsor, Supporter of the Henry County Council on Aging Miles for Meals, a Former Member of the Henry County Chamber Ambassador's Committee who was recognized as the 2016 Ambassador of the Year. Ed serves as a Staff Musician, Bass Guitar Player, didn't know that, Ed, for Trees of Righteousness Christian Fellowship in Hampton, Georgia. During his off time, he enjoys songwriting, recording, and producing music.
All right, group, on the count of three. One, two, three. Yeah? One, two, three. Thank you. Let me take two. Group, on the count of one, two.
Our next item is a proclamation. July is Parks and Recreation Month. Clayton County Board of Commissioners observes July 2022 as National Park and Recreation Month. Whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including Clayton County Parks and Recreation Department, and whereas parks and recreation promotes health and wellness, improving the physical and mental health of people who live near parks, which positively impacts mental health by increasing cognitive performance and well-being, and alleviating illnesses such as depression, attention deficit disorders, Alzheimer's, and is fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community. And whereas parks and recreation encourages physical activities by providing space for popular sports, hiking trails, swimming pools, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles while providing healthy meals, nutritional services, educational activities such as out-of-school time programming, youth sports, and environmental education, which are critical to childhood development. And whereas parks and recreation increases a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction, as well as essential and adaptable infrastructure that makes our communities resilient in the face of natural disasters and climate change. And whereas our parks and national recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and Clayton County recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources. Now therefore I, Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the month of July 2022 as National Park and Recreation Month. We encourage all citizens to renew their commitment to living an active lifestyle, enjoying green space and natural environments in all our park amenities. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of Clayton County,
Mr. Chairman, our next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda Approval.
All right, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Anderson. Are there any questions on any of the items? Hearing none. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Issue unanimous.
Our next item is item number two, Task Order RFP Number 16-49, Central Services Director, Carol Rogers.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Vice Chairman, Commissioners. Recommendation for Approval of Task Order. This is a request off of Contract Number RFP 16-49, which is the On-Call Transportation Project Engineering and Design Services for Clayton County, Georgia. The request is to approve the task order for the services as requested by the Transportation and Development Department. The Director's recommendation is to approve the task order in the amount of $99,000, and the Board awarded this contract to Atlas Technical Consultant LLC located in Duluth, Georgia, on December 6, 2016. Funding is available through the 2015 SPOS Program. The task order for the Board of Reference Proposal is attached for your review and information. The request is for you to approve the recommendation, authorize the Chairman, his designee, to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the intent of the contract, and authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget accordingly.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
Yes.
Commissioner.
I have questions because, thank you, Ms. Rogers, and I don't know if you'll be able to answer these or if it needs to go to our Transportation and Development. But as I was reviewing the contract, I noticed that this actually is for time and materials, and then as I'm looking over the actual scope of services, it's about finding relevant studies related to traffic calming programs and existing programs within Georgia, and the effectiveness of the devices and the methods of installation, methods of funding, and then looking at our codes as well. So, I think when I'm looking at this, I'm trying to figure out how this expansion is going to help us considering we just completed an engagement, and that's part of it too, but an entire community engagement piece with Georgia Tech, with the ARC, looking at these same things. So, I just want to make sure that we're not overlapping, and it looks as if, when it breaks it down from Atlas, a lot of this is going to pay people for just consulting. But it says time and materials, but it says 160 that they're getting an hour for the consulting, and then even the stakeholder part, a majority of it is going there, which is $22,500, which is great, but we just finished this whole stakeholder engagement with the Georgia Tech study. So I just want to know how this is going to help that, or if we're making sure that we're not duplicating efforts.
And I'll certainly defer to Director Matarco on the scope of services, and the contract is based on an hourly contract because it is the consultant information, so that's the reason why that rate is there, but I'll certainly defer to Director Matarco on the scope of services.
The, excuse me, the Georgia Tech study that you refer to, if I'm not mistaken, you're referring to the smart pedestrian study?
Correct.
That was based off of sidewalk needs in the county and where the sidewalk is existing in the county. This is different.
Okay.
This is speeding, cut-through traffic in neighborhoods, traffic calming devices, speed humps, roundabouts, median diverters, there's a whole slew of different devices that curb traffic in neighborhoods. Some of them will address some pedestrian issues, but that's really not the focus.
I got it. So, did I hear you say, right, that you were going to be looking into speed, deceleration devices such as humps and pumps?
We, it's in the SPOS Program for the 21 program to look into a traffic calming program. So this is the first part of it, to summarize what's out there, kind of the state of the practice, best practices in the area, in the nation, in the state, and bring back forward to you things that we think will fit here as a potential use, benefits, costs, how to pay for them, how to engage the citizens on them, what does the major stakeholders, police, fire, sheriff, think of these, whatever these might be, to see if there's something we can do to make the community safer and to curb speeding in the neighborhoods.
Thank you so much for that. That is exciting to know and understand it now.
Any other questions? All right, those in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item is item number five.
The recommendation is for Fourth Contract Amendment. This is for RFP 17-196, which is Tenants Management Services for Clayton County. Our recommendation is to extend the current contract with Premier Sports Facility Management Group, LLC. They're located in Jonesboro, Georgia. We're requesting to extend the contract from July 15 through August 15, 2022. The project is funded by participants, therefore there is no additional cost to the county. The Department Recommendation Memo and Amendment are attached for your review and information. The request is for you to approve the recommendation, authorize the Chairman, his designee, to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the intent of the contract, and authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget accordingly.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
Yes, I just want to make sure that we're getting, on this one, feedback from the community on the program, because again, it's just showing another revision, and I just want to make sure that we're looking to make, to ensure that we got the best services provided.
And yes, and this revision is due to, we have a current bid that's out there that we're in the review evaluation, so this is just to make sure that we have continuous services. We will be bringing the new contract to you probably either at the 19th Board Meeting or the first Board Meeting in August. So this is just an extension of the current contract.
For that purpose, thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Issue unanimous.
Our next item is item number six.
The recommendation for award is for PSA 2020-174, which is Finance Advisory Services for Clayton County, Georgia. The recommendation is to award a professional service agreement with Terminus Municipal Advisory LLC located in Atlanta, Georgia. The cost is $14,583 per month. It is for six months with a total of $87,500. Funding is available through the General Fund. The agreement is attached for your review and recommendation. The request is for you to approve the recommendation, authorize the Chairman, his designee, to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the intent of the contract, and authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget accordingly.
Is there a motion?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
Yes, I do. Is this the same Terminus that is working for our Housing Authority?
I think it is.
It is?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and I guess with the issues that they've had down in Warren Robbins that have been recently in the news, have we looked into that to make sure that is not going to be a negative impact on our county?
Yes, and the first thing we did, Commissioner Davis, that we did vet with other companies. We were looking for a company that could provide two, three different things, so we did look at statewide contract. They had consultants, but they could not do recruiting services. We also looked at co-ops, and we looked at kind of headhunter firms. So this is a firm that we know is working successfully with Douglas County, so we don't have any, you know, I don't have anything to show that there will be any negative impact to the county.
Okay, and what were those three items that you said you wanted to check for?
Yes, one of them was the day-to-day for finance, another one was for process and procedure review, and another one was to assist in recruiting a finance director.
Okay, because when I looked at them, they only have four employees, and so I'm concerned with how they are going to be able to pull off all of these tasks without going out and possibly having to obtain consultants for themselves.
And that is part of some of the contracts where they do have to, they may, similar to like a CEI service contract, where they may have to have ability to bring on other people to meet the needs, but the ultimate responsibility is on that company to provide that information to the county.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Well, one more.
Oh, go ahead.
They will not be running our day-to-day operations, though, as from a CFO perspective.
Right, that's correct, and they will answer to CFO Merritt. They work directly with her, but it would just be maybe administrative assistance type of, you know, anything else that may be needed in finance. But yes, it will be under the CFO.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions? All right, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Nay.
Four of one, it passes.
Thank you.
I think we have a budget amendment.
Our next item is Budget Amendments for the Library Board. This is presented by interim CFO Stacy Merritt.
Hi, good afternoon, Chairman, Vice Chair, and Commissioners. I am requesting to amend the budget in order to return unused FY 2021 grant, state grant monies in the amount of $60,834 to the Georgia Board of Regents. And I believe Director Led is here to answer some questions.
Okay, let's get a motion first. Is there a motion? I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, now, are there any questions?
Yes.
Ms. Led.
What was this money for? What was this grant for?
When the county population went up, they allotted us a additional position, and this money was to fund that position. So we were trying to get the position funded during the year, but we weren't able to get HR to let us advertise the position, so we could not fill the position. So if you don't fill the position, you have to give the funds back.
I have a problem with giving back money that the county can be using.
Boy, this, I'm sorry.
No, go on, no.
I was just going to say, this money was for a position, correct?
Right, we got another position created.
When you say HR didn't advertise it for you, you're talking about our HR estate.
Yeah, I kept sending the information saying we needed to advertise the position. I sent the position description, all the stuff that we needed, and I kept saying, we need to advertise this to get it filled. If we don't, we will lose this money. So we have filled the position this year, but it still took half the year to get it advertised, so we could finally get the position filled. So we have finally filled the position, but it took a while. But the money was there, the money comes from the state every month, and we sent in all the paperwork, but we couldn't get it put out there.
What was the timeline? What was the timeline we had to find a person?
Well, first, we just had to advertise it, because once we advertised it, we would get applicants, but we couldn't advertise it without going through the county. We can't advertise it on our own. There are library industry places where you can advertise, but we have to let it go through the county first to be advertised, then we can advertise it.
And you started from what period of time to what period?
We got the money July of 2020, and it went to July of 2021, or June of 2021. No, we got it in '21 to '22, so it just ended with the last fiscal year, not this one that just ended, but the one before.
How long has that person been in place?
She, we got her hired February the 14th, February 12th of this year.
So, first of all, we hold positions for three months prior to, unless they're emergency or public safety. So that's three months right there, so...
So they really give you a year to fund it, and what happens is, after six months, if you don't fund it, sometimes you can use some of the money for other things, but because we didn't get it funded within that time, we ended up having to give the money back.
And the only thing we needed to do was to advertise the position?
Yeah, advertise and fill the position.
Thank you.
I have a question as well. When we do these grant, grant funding that has to come through the county, generally it's already on the agenda, and we know what the requirements are. So, I too have a concern that it's gone on so long, and that this board was not made aware of it, and personally, I wasn't made aware of it until the state library system said that they weren't getting a response from staff within the county for the return of the funds, and that's because I'm constantly talking to those on the library board. So, understanding that when we apply for grant funding, we know what those requirements are, it is concerning that we didn't do what we needed to do, because then it affects us being able to get additional funding down the road, and the board was not made aware of this concern. So when you said that you didn't get it posted, who did you notify that it wasn't being posted by HR?
I notified HR. I kept going back and forth with Pam, and then I notified Derek, and that's when we finally did get it posted. But I also notified Finance that these funds had to be returned, because we go through a process every year. So, I was talking back and forth with Dennis, and he was saying he was talking to Christopher, who is the representative from the state, and when he left, I've checked to say, ask Christopher, did you get a chance to talk to Dennis, did they return the funds? And he said, no, he had not talked to anybody from Clayton County. So then we started all over, and this time, we've gotten it on the agenda, so we can return the funds.
So does that mean, now that the position is filled, that we're going to continue to get those funds? Or that we just have to return back the unreused funds?
If we return this money, we will continue to get state grants. If we do not return this money, we will not continue to get state grants.
And what is our deadline to return it?
It was...
It was passed.
It's passed.
But I think they've made contact with the gentleman from the state, and he's good with it, so there's no problem with us returning the money and standing in good standing.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, I think what the issue is, is the board not being notified, and so when we have these funds, because you know I'm a big advocate for grant funding and things of that nature, you or someone needs to let us know if you're not getting what you receive, because this board will make sure that you get what you need if you let us what? Know. So please, don't ever let that happen. Just let us know, and, you know, we will take care of it and move from there. So I think that's the issue that's concerning for all of us.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I think with the structure issue, help with that, once you notify Mr. Stanford. I think that what we got to understand is, even though Ms. Led works on behalf of the Board, the Library Board, the employees are Clayton County employees, as we're stating.
Yes.
So it just goes to what we're dealing with, with the... So it just goes to what we're dealing with, with the communication. And hopefully, we streamline that, so we'll have better communication. But I got to lean towards Vice Chair. It's, it's, it's not okay to say it's okay, because it affects us. And, and, and it still is a, a negative on our county when we're trying to get these fundings, so.
Correct me if I'm wrong, you, you work closely with CEO of Stanford every day anyway.
Yes. Yes, I do. But we did everything we could do to try to get the position filled.
But it was sent to HR first?
Yes.
Okay. Waited and waited, and then went to, uh, okay.
Yeah.
I just want to know the process.
Yeah, I wanted to go through the chain of command.
And let's make sure the reporting is in order, so I think our other vote was going to help with that, too.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, issue unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, our next item is item number 17, approval of the June 28th special call meeting minutes.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the June 28, 2022 special call meeting minutes? Is there a motion?
Uh, yes, I move that we approve the minutes from the June 28 special call meeting.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I abstain.
One abstention.
Yes.
Issue unanimous. Four approvals and one abstention.
Mr. Chairman, our next two items are board appointments for the code enforcement board.
All right, first board appointment is to the code enforcement board. Ms. Clea Etheridge, term on the code enforcement board will expire July 16, 2022. New term will begin immediately, July 16, 2022, and expire July 16, 2025. This is an at-large appointment, are there any recommendations? I would like to make a motion to reappoint Ms. Etheridge. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Here and none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Issue unanimous. Next board appointment is also to the code enforcement board. Ms. Lorraine Oliver, term on the code enforcement board expires July 16, 2022. New term will begin July 16, 2022, expire July 16, 2025. At-large appointment, any recommendations?
Is Ms. Oliver interested in remaining? Anybody check with her?
No, I didn't. I have not. Anybody else? Hold it till the next meeting.
I have somebody, I'll ask them.
Our next item is item number 20, public hearing for resolution 2022-142.
Good evening, this public hearing is in conjunction with item 21. It's relating to abandoning approximately 2.43 acres of roadway for the closed portion of Mount Zion Road, related to the aquaponics facility that the board voted on at the last meeting. I guess if there's any additional questions, Mr. Matarco may be able to, to answer those. But there's, in order to abandon this, it requires a public hearing first.
All right, so at this time, we're going to go into a public hearing on this matter. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of, in favor of us abandoning the roadway for that specific purpose? All right, anybody like to speak in opposition, too? Anybody opposed? All right, that will conclude. Oh, we got somebody, please come forward now.
Good evening, Board. I'm not neither opposed nor for. I would just like to know additional information. I've done research and I've read that this inform, that this is a great growth opportunity for us. However, I don't understand how it will impact me as a homeowner and my fellow neighbors. What, is this a commercial facility? And if so, how have you guys done research to let us know? Like, it's, it's a great thing, but how will it impact us? And by the way, my name is Ramika White.
Thank you, Ms. White. Who we got? Come, come forward, Ms., Ms. Rocker. And just tell us a little bit about the project, from what you can tell us, and if there will be any impact to the neighborhood and subdivision.
Certainly, thank you, Ms. War for your question. Yeah, the request for the right-of-way to be deeded over to the project, which is the Andrew Young Foundation Aquaponics Farm. It's a nine-acre resident, formerly residential parcel, and it's in a triangular shape. And so for the width of the greenhouse, that will be on site there. It is my understanding that this other piece of land is undevelopable, and the slither of land is owned by the county, and it's needed for them to have proper turnaround, I think from a safety standpoint, for fire trucks and things like that. But there should be no impact, there is no adjacent residential or across the street. The zoning got reverted and approved to agriculture use. So I do have maps and, you know, images of what the finished project will look like, that I'm happy to email and share with you if you would like.
That answer your question, thank you, ma'am, thank you, Ms. Rocker. All right, anybody else? All right, that will conclude public comment, Mr. Reed.
The next item is resolution 2022-142. I'd like to make a slight amendment to what's on your paper, which is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to abandon approximately 2.43 acres of right-of-way for the closed portion of Mount Zion Road, to authorize the chairman to execute any documents relating thereto, and to otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expenses may be required, and to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes.
All right, is there a motion? I'll make the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Issue unanimous, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, our next item is public comments. Citizens will be given two minutes maximum time limit to speak before the Board of Commissioners, with a total time of 20 minutes for public comments. Please note that all public comments must be limited to matters on the agenda or over matters which the governing body has jurisdiction. Speakers must maintain decorous demeanor and refrain from personal attacks upon board members, shouting and using obscene language. Please state your name and county of residence, I'm sorry, residency for the record, excuse me. Speak clearly into the microphone, and speakers should be courteous, respectful, and not make any disparaging remarks or use abusive language when addressing the board.
Gwendolyn Gooden.
Madam Clerk, Gwendolyn Gooden, unincorporated Clayton County. Commissioners, public comments were originally at the beginning of this board's meetings. Over the years, they have been moved around and even removed, which was a violation of either citizens' First Amendment rights. In response to your question, Commissioner Hamburg, regarding why Commissioner Davis' photo is shown as Spidey Splash at International Park, it's in his district. Although Flint River Community Center is in Commissioner Franklin's district, it is not her center. The center belongs to senior services, not parks and recreation. Therefore, her, therefore, her picture should be replaced by Director Tori Strata tanks. But we can resolve this issue about photo placements by removing all the photos from all the centers and replace this with the photo of the Board of Commissioners. This solution does not require a vote from the entire board. It is a operations decision. Therefore, it only requires Chairman Turner's approval, thank you.
Thank you, Orlando Gooden.
Orlando Gooden, Clayton County. Can you give this to Chairman Turner and Commissioner Davis, please?
You need to be careful with envelopes.
Please proceed.
There are signs in District 3 that read, "Your opinion matters, let your voice be heard." But Commissioner Franklin voted two times to move public comments to after the consent agenda and before the executive session. Now reducing it from three minutes to two minutes. Is that what "Let Your Voice Be Heard" is? She said we have, we have quarterly meetings, but overlooked Commissioner Anderson removing individuals from a Zoom meeting because of a question. And during the in-person meetings, some commissioners ignore questions on comment cards. Resolution 2022-133 is a violation of the First Amendment right of freedom of speech by limiting what we can say on agenda items. Commissioner Hamburg said, "We are putting public comments back to where it was." Did you mean prior to 2017, when Commissioners Edmondson, Franklin, and Gregory voted to remove it completely? Commissioner Davis, I commented on articles in Clayton Crescent and the AJC. But the article in Clayton Crescent, July 1st, which we've got, could be a reason why CFO Ramona Bivins was disrespected and removed. Commissioner Hamburg voted for resolution 2022-132, an independent investigation of CFO Ramona Bivins, but not for the housing board. Chairman Turner salute resolution 2022-134. Didn't Edmondson try this before? Commissioners usurping the chairman's authority. Thank you.
Thank you, Jocelyn Benham.
Good afternoon, my name is Joycelyn Benham. I'm in unincorporated Clayton County, and my concerns are two things. We now have a lot of investors that are moving into our area. And with that comes problems far as homeowners, because all, a lot of the problem, problem comes from renters. We have a problem in our neighborhood, which I've spoken about to my commissioner, about trash. We've called code enforcement, they're leaving trash or they're not cleaning their yards. And when people come to pick up their trash, they're putting too much out there that the trash people will not pick up, and they're left on the street. That's a concern of mine, a big concern, and with them not more in their yard. My other concern is about the traffic that's on Roundtree Road. They treat Roundtree Road as though they're on highway, Interstate 85, Interstate 75, Interstate 20. Our street, when you turn right or left, there's a hill and there's a curve. And we really need some of that money that the guy was talking about earlier. We need some of that on our street. Our street needs to be paved as well, that's never been paved, and I paved, and I've been there 30 years, never. And I like some things happening in my neighborhood, please.
Thank you. Mickey Garber.
Madam Clerk, Mickey Garber, unincorporated Rex, Georgia. My comments tonight is about public comment placement and reduction in speaking time. How important are we if our voice in public comment is at the end of the agenda? How important are we if our voice is reduced from three minutes to two minutes? We are not a nation of sheep, nor will we, the citizens of Clayton County, allow any one of you to use any one of us as your Judas goat. Thank you.
Mary Ward. Mary Ward. Charlene Hill. Carol Yancy.
Carol Yancy, Rex, Georgia. Chairman Turner, Commissioner Davis, thank you to both for representing and working for the people with a willingness to hear our concerns in a professional, respectful manner versus the power plays, position struggling, titles, diversions, intimidation, bullying, and filing false police reports against citizens, and all other attempts to silence our voice that we're experiencing from a few public officials. Claytoncrescent.org quoted Ms. Anderson's June 21 explanation of motions regarding Ms. Bivins. Quote, "I just want to let everyone know that this was brought to my attention, and I want to, we have some questions on whether there was any types of funds that were used inappropriately. And we want to make sure that the taxpayers' money is being used proper way. So that is why I brought this motion forward. Yet, we have not heard any motions to the allegations or audit, the audit or allegations of Ms. Franklin's babysitter constituent aid and hotel reimbursements receipts to ensure taxpayer dollars are used the proper way and no commingling of personal expenses with public funds and is in line with the county's previous established policies and procedures, all in place for all to abide by, not disparate treatment. This was brought to you all's attention, the board, via John David emails, public comments, and Claytoncrescent.org articles. Thank you."
Madam Clerk, that concludes public comment. Mr. Reed, do we need a executive session?
Yes, sir, on personnel, real estate, and litigation.
For what now?
All three. Yes.
Is there a motion to go executive session for litigation, real estate, and personnel?
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Issue unanimous. Everybody have a good evening. Motion to reconvene.
Some move.
Uh, second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Issue unanimous. Ms. Amos.
Good evening again, Board, and good evening to our Clayton County citizens. On behalf of the Office of the District Attorney, and per Civil Service Rule 5.201, Human Resources is requesting the following staff changes. The first one, we want to hire a candidate as assistant attorney, district attorney, at grade 27, step 9. I will spell this candidate's name for the record, I dare not butcher the name. The total compensation for grade 27, step 9, is eighty, eighty-seven thousand eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars. The starting compensation for this position is actually grade 27, step 7, so we're just asking for a two-step increase. The cost of this request is one thousand nine hundred and sixty-five dollars. The second request is to provide a step increase to Chief Assistant District Attorney Jeffrey Hawkins from grade 33, step 14, to grade 33, step 18. Total compensation for grade 33, step 18, is one hundred twenty-eight thousand four hundred dollars. The cost of this request is five thousand eight hundred and forty-eight dollars. The total cost of this, of both requests is seven thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars. However, funding is available in the budget, in the district attorney's BY 23 budget.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion?
Some move.
Is there a second, I'll second the motion, are there any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Issue unanimous, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Okay, we have one more. On behalf of Director Jeff Matarco, Transportation and Development-
On behalf of Director Jeff Matarco, Transportation and Development, we are requesting a five thousand dollar supplement for the Assistant Director, Mr. Keith Rowland.
Is there a motion?
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous.
Thank you, Chairman.
Motion to adjourn.
Some move.
I'll second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous. Good night.
All.